I'm not sure, I haven't heard from Council Gilbert, but we have the quorum here, so we'll get started. It's 7:01, I like to call the regular council meeting for April 25th to order. First order of business on the agenda is a call for any pecuniary interest regarding the agenda. Does anybody have any that they want to declare? Nope, I have none, I'll go to item three. The agenda, are there any deletions or additions?
Can we discuss the trades in May long weekend?
Sure. Do you want to put that under, what do you want to put that under, Donna?
I would say, Mr. Mayor, probably 8.6.
8.6, okay. Great. Any other additions? If not, can I get a motion to accept the agenda with the addition?
Motion to accept the agenda with the addition.
Thank you, John, all in favor? That is carried. Number four, adoption of the previous minutes, the minutes of March 28th, the regular meeting, and the minutes from April 11th, the town meeting. Are there any error or omissions that anybody would like to bring forward? None? You're doing a good job, yes, that's good. All right, can I get a motion to accept the minutes, adopt the minutes of those two dates?
I'll make that motion.
Tracy, thank you, all in favor? That is carried.
Which may I add to that?
Yes, we will comment, get you in, we need you.
Thanks.
Going to the next item would be the 7.1, the Luke Regional Subdivision Appeal Board. Say, Donna, would you like to comment on that for us, please?
For sure. Basically, the Luke County has really partnered with us well with some of these documents you're going to see tonight, and the Regional Subdivision Appeal Board, it's returned from the April 11th committee to hold for decision. So, we presented the draft, the Luke County Town Authority Subdivision Appeal bylaw 2023-04, our new Regional Subdivision Development Appeal Board bylaw, and our development officer Liz Arvich provided a presentation about the FDAB, and we want to have this entity, the Luke County, wants to have this entity in place for the first 2023, and these are decisions regarding our involvement in this board. As you can see in the package, on page 14 of 206, we have the bylaw, talking about the Subdivision Appeal Board. We understand that council is reluctant as well to pass three readings in one evening. We're requesting for this, it's very straightforward, if council would consider that, that's a thought. And then, of course, the agreement is behind, so you've been able to read the agreement throughout the week, and it just talks about what the FDAB is, the rule of the clerk, and the membership. On section four, page two of 10 of the agreement, section 4.4, the clerk, which is Joyce in the county, provides a shortlist of candidates for appointment to each municipality for review. The municipality has a concern about a candidate on the shortlist, the county shall contact the clerk. So she, she looks after getting everybody there to the meeting. The mayor and I are trained, usually the mayor would be probably last off the hop. They may ask me if it's for another municipality to sit in on something, but if they can find someone from the general public to do so, that has been trained, Joyce will look after that. So we don't have to look for anybody. And it talks about the membership, the terms of appointment, a three-year appointment, and then, of course, the county manager for the county appoints Joyce to the clerk, which is just typical FDAB, every municipality. The remuneration for half-day under four-hour hearing is $155, and if it's me, if they would pay the town authority, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take any of that money. However, if you're elected, the mayor can go, but somebody from the public will take that $155, right? I would take it, a full day, it's 3:10, I can tell you, as FDAB chair for the city of Luke, I've never been there a full day, but some nights it felt like a full day. So, and then, there's additional remuneration, so it's just, it's just typical. And, and then, if there's appeal filings, well, then it goes to the province. And, and so Joyce looks after the packages. In an FDAB hearing, you get the package the night before. You're not allowed to have it any sooner, under the rules, and you can't go looking for whoever's appealing, you can't do anything, right? You just got to go buy your legislated documents, which is the municipal development plan and the land use bylaw. That's it, that's all you can go buy. So, anyways, there's, there's the agreement there, and then we have the Schedule A is the procedure, what happens, the hearing procedure. It seems really daunting, it really isn't, once you've been out it a while, but it seems really daunting. And then, Schedule B is rules of conduct for members. So, it's, it's interesting when you're on an FDAB board, because you have to hear everybody fairly. You can't have any bias, you can't have any previous thoughts, that's why they don't let you go scout things out or phone people. And so, it's difficult, like when, and this is all over with, but when the homeless shelter came to the Duke, and we had a five-hour hearing, it was tough, there was a lot of passion in the room. The whole council chamber was full, people were online, there were 50 people online. There was, there was shelter residents that wanted to speak, and, oh, boy, boy, you really...
And a lot of people try and get ahold of you ahead of time, and you can't, you can't, and if you, it's kind of like being in court. If somebody approaches you and you talk to them, you're off the board.
You're off the board. And we have some folks when we adjourn, because you adjourn to deliberate, some former councilors of the city that come up to say hello to us, how's it going? Sorry, I have to leave right now, because the chair, I have to say, I have to leave chambers right now. And we don't talk to anybody, they try to get us to talk, I just give them a warning. It's just, it's a very interesting process, so, anyways. Will we have some in Thorbsby? We get some more development, we will, you always do. And Subdivision Appeal Board actually both appealed the decision of the development officer, which is Liz. So, that's basically the package, so I, I leave it up to council discretion if, if you wish to have unanimous consent to go to three readings tonight, and, of course, have the, have the mayor sign the address.
All right, so I guess I'd like to ask for a motion, do you want to do all three today?
I would prefer it if we could, being that only this bylaw really, they want to get it into force me first.
Yes.
And it really only has to do with, here's what we're doing in the Subdivision Appeal Board, and it's just a procedure by law.
Okay, so if I can get a motion for the first, first reading?
I'll make a motion for the first reading.
John, in favor? That is carried, and then if I can get a motion for the second?
I'll make that motion.
Tracy, thank you, all in favor? And then I would like to need a, a motion to, so that we can do the third, the unanimous, so we can do the third reading tonight. So I'd get a motion for that.
I'll make the motion for the, for the third unanimous reading.
Thank you, John, all in favor? Carried, and then the last and final one is the third, third reading. One more motion.
I'll make that motion.
Tracy, all in favor? Carried, done. And like you say, likely, it probably won't ever, maybe use it, but, in a minute.
Maybe not, like I said before, the person we had to rib, he was with seven lawyers, and he hadn't had one in 30 years. It was crazy.
That's his thing.
And so, if we like, we have a surprise. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that, I'll alert the county tomorrow morning.
Okay, 7.2, residential development incentive policy, and we've talked about this before.
We have.
So, Donna, if you just wanted to just gloss over it there real quickly, and then we can, if we want to rescind it. We're looking for, I believe, to rescind the policy, because it is a policy, right?
It is a policy of worship, and basically, the municipal government act under 347-1, we discussed it last committee, the home discussed it with our legal experts as for their interpretation, and basically, legal has confirmed that the section, with or without passing a resolution, every year to cancel taxes, was never permitted to be used as a tax incentive. You can defer taxes, you, as a council, you can tell someone that they don't have to pay for a while if they're undergoing hardship, or you could offer tax rebate. In other words, if you want a low-flush toilet, we can give you $100 rebate to a low-flush toilet. You can't cancel taxes. So, this, this policy was never appropriate, and what it did for residential is it allowed residential taxpayers, and there's some taxpayers, well, they're not going there, but it allowed residential folks that had a new house to 100% off the first year, 100% the second, they go with 25, 20, and 5, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I can look at the calculator. So, 100, 150, 50, and 25, so you've got 2, 300 and 1/4% in five years. And again, if I was a homeowner and this was a policy, I'd dare, I'll take advantage of it. But residential taxes are not allowed to have these incentives. Commercial is, and that's about it. Residential farm and machinery taxes have to stay the way they're supposed to be. So, administration would ask a council to rescind this policy.
Thank you, can I get a motion to rescind policy 2012-04?
I'll make a motion to rescind policy 2012-04.
Thank you, John, in favor? That is carried. New business, 8.1, proclamation of Public Works Week at Public Works Open House. We have a nice little poster here, and I believe it's May 21st to the 27th.
Correct.
So you're just looking for a proclamation for that.
We are, Mr. Mayor, and we're going to change the date, we didn't realize that the 21st is so long when Kim's in, who would probably show up for the open house. So we're going to, the following Wednesday, which is what date, Jeff, the 23rd?
So what date?
It'll be the 20, 24th of May, unfortunately, it'll be the open house. Yeah, and what we're going to do is we're going to have also open house into the water treatment plant, and we'll bring all the equipment over to the water treatment plant, the Public Works folks, and we will have hot dogs and buns and so forth, we'll do a barbecue. Folks can take a tour of the water treatment plant, the kids can see the equipment. We'll have a big batch of chalk there, and we thought that the kids could draw inside the buckets and give a nice message to the Public Works guys, as they're, as they're doing it, they can draw inside the bucket. So, and it's just open, and Dave will be there at the water treatment plant. He said just come on in, and, and he's happy to do that, we chatted with him today, he's excited about that. So, we just need your worship of motion for proclamation.
So you have discussion more on it, or?
That's from 4 till 6, on a Wednesday?
Yep.
Yep, at the water treatment plant.
That is correct. We were going to work on the long weekend, but then we thought might not be yet.
No, there's enough going on that weekend, I can tell you. All right, so I can get a motion to proclaim that weekend, and May the 24th adds up.
I'll make that motion.
Tracy, all in favor? Carried. 8.2, intermunicipal development plan and intermunicipal collaborative framework. We have a letter from Minister Schultz.
I'll let that through, your worship, I think.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
No problem. Thank you. Remind, if I got it backwards here, the letter first, Jeff, hang on.
Okay, so you're going to do the other?
Let's go with the letter, your worship, sorry, let's take the, Jeff, the letter first.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's what I, I was just looking at that way, so we'll...
And I'll have words here, whenever you're ready to help her.
Okay, we'll go with the letter, your worship.
Okay, so basically, we have a letter from Rebecca Schultz, the minister of municipal fairs, and she is asking us to adopt their bylaw, I guess, is that very correct, Donna?
No, the bylaw goes with the...
That's the other one, okay, sorry.
That's okay, your worship.
I'll let you, I'll let you speak to it then.
I don't know, I can't get things straight, so I don't know anything. So, intermu, intermunicipal collaboration frameworks are a legislated document for all municipalities. We need them if we're not part of a regional growth strategy, and we aren't, because we're too far away from Edmonton. At one time, Thorbsby was part of the global economic group way back when, but what happened was with Edmonton having the veto power, Thorbsby, Warburg, all the small municipalities were left out. And, and so it wasn't worth the big bucks to, to go there. So, it's easier to have an intermunicipal collaboration framework with the county. So we collaborate on certain things, in other words, we agree not to put a daycare next to a intensive livestock operation, that, that kind of stuff, we kind of talk about it. And we were all supposed to have them in place pretty quickly, but the minister has extended the time to 2020... Yeah, 2027. We're done ours already, because that's in the council package tonight, so we're way ahead of schedule. So she's just, under ministry order, she's allowing us the...
She's, she's just giving us a letter telling us that we have to do it.
That is correct, and it's under section 708321 of the municipal government act, that she enacted this order.
Okay, all right, so do you want to...
Just information, your worship, you said that's information?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, said that's information.
Thanks, John, all in favor? That is carried. All right, now we'll get into the plan. Fun stuff, fun stuff. So, are you, are we calling Liz on this one, Nancy, are?
Good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, how are you tonight?
I am doing good, and what about you all?
Good, good, thank you very much. So, we're, we're talking about the, the plan here, and I know you talked to us at the last time we had our, our meeting here, and basically, I guess we're just looking to finish it here.
Yeah, pass all the amendments. Council, your worship, council, hello Liz, nice to hear you. I was studying in the county, met with, met with the county, and we looked at the amendments. So what we put in your package tonight was the two documents, the one we marked up, and then, bless you, and then the other one that we want to pass. And again, these are also legislated documents, and I will leave it to the experts, with your permission, Mr. Mayor. Liz, your permission, you have the floor.
Absolutely, you have it.
All right, thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to start by talking about the intermunicipal development plan. The purpose of the intermunicipal, of all intermunicipal development plans is to provide a framework for land use along the common boundaries of two municipalities. So in this case, it's Leduc County and the town of Thorbsby. The original IDP was adopted in 2019 to comply with the municipal government act, which at that time required every municipality, with some exceptions, that had to be approved by the minister, which were typically rural to rural. And the IDP itself requires that it be reviewed every four years. As Ms. Tona mentioned, actually, never mind, nope, that's for the ICFs. So on April 6th, the Joint Intermunicipal Liaison Committee met to discuss the IDP. At that time, the committee endorsed and approved by the respective counselors at the meeting the revisions identified in the red line version of the IDP, which are attached. The proposed revisions are primarily housekeeping in nature. The proposed revisions are primarily housekeeping in nature and include addition of the twenty twenty-one federal population census information, updated, update to regional policy and provincial legislation to ensure that it is consistent with the MGA, removal of the steering committee member list, because the committee members change as council chooses to change them, clarification of the policies, and shortening of the timeframe for discretionary development, development permit referrals from twenty-one days to fourteen days. If council agrees with the revisions identified in the redline version, um, as endorsed by the Joint Intermunicipal Liaison Committee, administration recommends council give first reading to this bylaw to repeal and replace the Ladue County Town of Thorbsby IDP. We are doing a repeal and replace rather than an amendment to keep our document easier to, um, just cleaner. Um, before I move on to the ICF, are there any questions related to the IDP?
I don't think so, no. No, has anybody, no question there. It's, uh, pretty straightforward. It's a lot of work that's been done on this. I can see that, so.
Well, the bulk of the work was done back in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So honestly, now it's a lot easier, because you're just updating every so many years. Um, and so the ICF, I'll jump into that one now, um, the province mandated ICFs at the same time as the IDPs for all municipalities in the province. What, what was, um, unique between the IDP and ICF is no matter what was going on on your boundary, you had to have an ICF. So there are rural-to-rural municipalities that literally have a river between them. And they still had to have an ICF that basically, the way I look at ICFs is they're meant to summarize all your agreements. They become a great source of information for future administration, council, um, and any consultants that need to know, and residents that need to know what you've agreed to with your municipality. So it almost becomes just a, a logbook of everything that you've agreed to, um, throughout the history. And as some get replaced or repealed, then they get removed. So that's why we update it. And as Ms. Tona mentioned, this is the document that the minister has given an extended timeframe on. However, we do not require that extended timeframe due to the hard work of Ladue County being on top of the, um, legislative requirements before they were amended. Um, so again, we adopted the ICF in twenty nineteen at approximately the same time as the IDP, which is in keeping with the regulations. Section four B of the IV, IV, ICF required the intermunicipal liaison committee meeting at least once every four years, commencing no later than twenty twenty-three. On April sixth, um, of this year, the intermunicipal liaison committee reviewed the ICF and endorsed the revisions that are attached to this report in the redline ver- version. Again, similar to the IDP, the amendments are, or the revisions are minor in nature, and they include, um, probably the most significant change, that amendments, amendments to the ICF will be approved by resolution and not adopted by bylaw. This is a change in the regulations, um, with the province, but what this means is we have to remove the bylaw the same way we adopted it. So before we can pass a resolution, we have to go through the removal process, um, of rescinding that bylaw. So we have to do first reading, public hearing, second and third, and then we will bring forward a resolution to adopt a new one. And this essentially will make it easier to update it in the future as needed. We also updated, um, regional policy and provincial legislation to be current. And we also, um, clarified, clarified and updated the service offered with any agreements that have been updated or created since twenty nineteen. So if council agrees with the redlined version of the ICF, um, we'll give first reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash oh six to repeal bylaw twenty nineteen dash twelve. And then, once it's repealed, um, through that process, we will now bring back to council a resolution for approval. And so the next steps for both of these is that if town council, um, proceeds with first reading, and if Ladue council does the same, which is expected to happen in April, um, then we will proceed to public hearing in accordance with the provisions of the MGA and through the rest of the approval process.
Gotcha. Sounds complicated, but I guess it isn't. Um, so, yeah, I was just looking at, uh, at the, uh, signatures, and so then it's, uh, once we get that done, then we go on to the second reading, is that?
Yeah, we're just looking, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, so tonight, we're looking at, uh, bylaw twenty twenty-three oh five, that's the intermunicipal development plan. We're looking at adoption, but we only want first reading tonight. And then twenty twenty-three oh six, the intermunicipal collaboration framework, we still only want first reading, because we have to go to public hearing.
For both of these documents, um, I believe you have to go to public hearing. Um, so the first one, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three oh five, is to repeal and replace the IDP. The second one, bylaw twenty twenty-three dash oh six, is to repeal bylaw twenty nineteen dash twelve, the ICF.
Okay, I think I got it. Anybody have any questions or discussion? Um, you know, it's a hundred and thirty-four pages here, but I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's really laid out quite well, actually, when you look at it. So, uh, can I get a motion to, uh?
Question, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, because you were talking about Ladue during there as well, is there gonna be a public hearing here in Thorbsby, or are we gonna have to travel to Ladue to?
I think we'll both do separately, once they'll do theirs, I, I would think.
I believe the intention is to hold two separate public hearings. They do not have to be held jointly. Some municipalities choose to do that, but it becomes a logistical challenge to get two councils together at the same time. So I believe the decision, um, was to hold two separate ones.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions? All right, so can I get a motion for draft bylaw twenty twenty-three oh five to repeal and replace Ladue County Town of Thorbsby intermunicipal development plan? John, on favor? And then the next one, can I get a motion for the draft bylaw twenty twenty-three oh six to repeal bylaw twenty nineteen, the ICF between Ladue County and Town of Thorbsby? Tracy, thank you. On favor? We're carried. Okay, so I think we're ready for the public meeting. Is that, once we get it all signed, is that all you have this, first, Liz?
I believe that is it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, uh, putting this through this year. It's, uh, it's, as you say, there's a lot of paper on it, but actually, it's not that long. Thank you.
Well, we have a professional development officer. Thanks, Liz. Oh, Liz, one question, Mr. Mayor, your indulgence. Um, I don't have, uh, my paperwork in front of me that I need, but when's the public hearing now have to be held, because there's a certain timeframe?
Um, we, what I will do is reach out to our counterparts in Ladue and confirm that they have passed, um, their first reading. And then I believe the plan was to hold them in May.
Okay.
Fair enough.
We will, we will coordinate with them in terms of scheduling. Um, and then I believe after that, we will, after both are held, we'll be able to move to second and third reading.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you have a great night.
Thank you, you as well.
All right, bye. Okay, yeah, let's, uh, oh, we're light years ahead. We got till twenty twenty-seven, so.
That's right, we're ahead scheduled. Thank God.
All right, moving on. Eight point three, the update on the RCMP retroactive salary costs. So we've, uh, got some correspondence on that, and I will turn it over to Seadon again to, uh, go through this here, please.
Thank you very much, your worship. So, um, Alberta municipalities put out a statement, this is, uh, basically for, for your information as ratepayers as well, put out a statement regarding the RCMP retroactive pay costs that many municipalities will have to pay. And Public Safety Canada has confirmed that the federal government is passing along all the costs of the RCMP retroactive salary increase to contract partners, which is us, everybody. The decision was made without municipalities at the table to advocate for themselves, and Alberta munis is working towards ensuring contract partners are provided with more accurate cost estimates and timeline. Well, Thorbsby is small enough not to be affected by these costs. Eh, I'm not sure. It's important nonetheless to advocate for the increased transparency from the government at all levels when it comes to ratepayer dollars. I, I never like to think we're out of it, even if it's a hundred bucks, you know, I don't like to think that. So what it is, is, um, there's a couple of things here, is, um, uh, municipalities of populations over five thousand, that's not us. Municipalities of populations under five thousand have low and likelihood receive your police services from the RCMP or under a provincial police service agreement. They're talking about Ontario PPSA as a, as a self-administered police service. Accordingly, your municipality, they're not RCMP contract partners, they're not affected. So Edmonton Calgary, those are not affected. It's the RCMP policing. So, um, AB munis will focus on the current round of collective bargaining to help ensure contract partners are provided with more accurate cost estimates. So Alberta municipalities have drafted a resolution which can be adopted and used to ensure a resolution opposing this decision and swiftly passed on. And the resolution to go out the, to go through all the whereas this, but, uh, basically, government of Canada has made a decision in twenty twenty-three to make municipalities responsible. These extraordinary one-time costs in some jurisdictions amount to millions of dollars, millions of dollars, and will cost significant hardship. Uh, whereas municipal governments are already paying a growing share of policing costs, but unlike other orders, the government cannot run deficits to spread out the impact. Whereas local governments will now be forced to make difficult decisions that will impact residents, such as cutting essential services, reducing policing levels, and of course, we reduce policing levels here. We had a crime spree this week, this weekend in Thorbsby, and, and, uh, really tough stuff here for folks. Raising property taxes significantly or cancelling or levies, policing levies, um, canceling work on local infrastructure at a time when, you know, community safety is, is important, rural crime is, is very, very serious. Whereas going forward, it's critical that municipalities be proactively engaged in any forthcoming processes related to contract policing, be it the result, be it the Town of Thorbsby, joint with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, in calling on the federal government to commit to ensuring that local governments are meaningfully consulted, fully informed, and at the table on issues related to policing costs, given the municipal role, and result that the town authorities can stage as support in writing to local members of parliament. So that's the resolution, and then they have a press release that we can put in the papers. Basically, they've written it for us, that we responded, and we put the date to the federal government's disappointing decision to pass on budgeted and then accounted for costs on municipalities. And of course, uh, the, uh, press release is there, but for the benefit of the gallery, it talks about months of advocacy led by Federation of Canadian Municipalities, to which we're a member. Provincial territorial associations and local leaders across Canada, the federal government has indicated that it will not be meeting the request to absorb the retroactive costs. I didn't think they were gonna be on us. Today's budget, the, the budget of, uh, further confirmed that communities across Canada are dependent on RCMP services, including, are expected to cover these costs, local governments are not at the table. Decision is an example of a federal commitment that deeply impacts municipalities. FCM has reiterated the need for municipalities to be actively involved. And then, of course, for more information, it's, uh, third legislative clerk, this is FCM, comes into the clerk, and FCM media relations in Ottawa. So we have two folds, one, uh, that, uh, we use this, uh, uh, this, uh, resolution to send not only to our MLA, but our MP and any federal ministers that we see fit, and we can look after that, and we can do a fan out, and then the other one is, uh, to have council, um, uh, approve the press release to put in the local paper and on our website.
Absolutely, and, and I mean, uh, we're fortunate, I guess, that we're we're under five thousand, that we're not, uh, subject to this, but still, we, they, the next thing is they'll be coming back on us, yeah. Anybody have any discussion on this, or any, uh, it's pretty, uh, pretty straightforward. I'm quite sure that, uh, the course of action for us is exactly as stated here. So, uh, there's no discussion on it, no?
There's a question on it there, just to be clear. So there's nothing for sure saying that the town isn't gonna have to pay for it.
No, correct.
And they made the agreement federally. So this letter and all this stuff that you're talking about is just a pushback?
Yes, that is correct.
Just they made the agreement that the federal government should pay for it?
Yep, that's, that's exactly what it is.
Right, because there is a lot of difference.
Oh, and it, I mean, with the, eh, this, this is, this is just, uh, the tip of the iceberg on the, on the RCMP and the policing. So I mean, but, you know, they've been, they've been threatening for us to, you get us to pay retroactive pay for, forever, and we, we said no. So it's a pushback, exactly, as you said.
We have no, there's no guarantees that we won't be stuck with something. And, and it has nothing to do with the members, it has nothing to do with their service. Um, it's just, we got, uh.
Yeah, and in all likelihood, we wouldn't be able to pay for it anyway, in the one year, in the one year.
We don't think anybody got trade, so.
We have to sell town office.
Good idea. Yeah, but we're. A busy arena.
Any, any other discussion on that? That kind of puts it in. So, uh, motion number one, if I could get one, please, resolved that the Town of Thorbsby joins the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in calling on the federal government to commit to ensuring that local governments are meaningfully consulted, fully informed, and at the table on issues related to policing costs, given the municipal role in keeping our community safe.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tracy. On favor? That is carried. And the second one, that the Town of Thorbsby conveys this support in writing to local members of the parliament. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Get that out there and put that in the paper, and away we go, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, sounds good, your worship.
That's number one. Okay, um, eight point four, special meeting audit. See if it listens, if you wanna.
Okay, so I have been, as I stated before, working on getting these books balanced from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one into the new, or the old software. And I'm just having difficulty with subledgers and stuff. I mean, I was here for fifteen hours yesterday, twenty-seven hours and two days last week. And it, it's just, it's tough. So we had, I wasn't ready for the auditors, because I didn't get this stuff done. Um, and then I'll have to do all the bank records and everything, so, um, it'll just be a bit neat. But we had to reschedule the financials, and then I had, so we, Dawn and I met with the auditors last Thursday. Um, and just to coordinate schedules, because Jess got surgery and, and, uh, last week attack season and stuff, so May fifth, the auditors are coming out next Friday to complete, and then she's gone for surgery for a week. So, um, they will have the statements ready for review by administration on June second. So we would need, um, to have a special meeting on June sixth, just for the financial statement. Um, so the May thirteenth special meeting would just be budget, and then again on June sixth. So we're just asking that you consider June sixth for a special audit meeting and pass the motion to approve that, that date. It's a Tuesday night.
That's a Tuesday night?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. So this is gonna look, and, uh, any comments? Questions?
Is this for twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one?
It's the twenty twenty-two audit, but because the twenty, so because she took them out of GP at the end of twenty twenty-one and put them into QuickBooks, GP was never updated for twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. So I've had to go back to twenty twenty-one, and I got that one balanced, but now twenty twenty-two, and it's a little bit trickier, because I have to make sure that the accounts payable match, accounts receivable match, and then everything going forward, the bank rec is absolutely, like, I have to make sure that the outstanding balances were in there. And then, um, because I can't do anything, GP doesn't carry anything forward unless the year is closed. So I've had to go back and, and then, and then the accounts in QuickBooks don't match the accounts in GP. So I'm having to try to, like, put numbers where I think they should go, but they're not gonna be in the proper department, because it's like one group. Everything's grouped under one, like insurance, for instance, if it's split out, it's all under one. So it's just been an exercise in frustration.
Could we end up with a unbenounced negative pay that we have to pay out?
No, 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 no.
No.
Because the books, like the GLs are, like, it's done, the audit for twenty twenty-one is done.
Yeah.
It's just that it was in QuickBooks, not in GP. So I have to bring the numbers into GP, right? But the old accounts in GP don't match the accounts. But the old accounts in GP don't match the accounts that were put into QuickBooks.
Because my main concern is, are we gonna be short money?
No, no, no. It's just getting everything to balance in the old software, from a different software, different accounts and subledgers, and because GP is a more sophisticated software, so there's all these underlying nuances that you have to make sure balance when you roll forward.
On GP, you mean great plan?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Question? Yeah, go ahead.
You were doing some calculations today, and you were doing how much, how many years back, how much Thorbsby has lost over the years?
I went back ten years.
And how much?
So over the last ten years, the town of Thorbsby has lost one point three million dollars.
Where, like overall, through our reserves? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, over the last ten years, the deficit over the, like accumulated deficit over ten years has been one point three million dollars, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, of which was in the last four years, like twenty twenty-one and, yes.
So when the auditors come out on June the third, they will be, I'm thinking it'll be?
The second?
Or? I thought you said June sixth.
Of June sixth, that will be the financial statement for you guys to approve.
That's right.
That'll be the presentation of the council and audit.
Great, okay, so then they'll, they'll present it, and then?
Yeah.
We'll pass it at that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say the auditors have indicated to me that pulling everything this year, pulling the samples and so forth from the organization that Cindy did last year is way better than the past years. So they can see the progression of getting things in order, so they haven't had to work as hard this year.
Yeah, so basically, what you're saying is like, when we passed the audit for twenty twenty-one, I mean, obviously, you know, the numbers were there, but they were not in a form that we could really carry forward.
Well, yeah, they were in QuickBooks.
Still got two different systems.
I felt, yeah, I had two systems, so to bring it into the system that we're using going forward has been, has been a challenge.
I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussions?
Well, so what I'm working on right now is I have the trial balance from GP, and then I have the trial balance from QuickBooks. And then I go and I put them all in the account, like the QuickBooks one into the column next to the GP one, and then I figure out the differences, then I have to go in and do a big entry to balance it all, but in the meantime, I still have to make sure that the, what is in the accounts payable ledger is also equal to what's in the accounts payable subledger.
Otherwise, you're left with the miscellaneous?
Otherwise, there's a disconnect somewhere. So it's been, and they haven't matched for, for years, so.
You think you can accomplish it then?
Well, I don't have a choice, so.
Well, once, once you get a starting point.
Oh, you know what? Yeah.
Operations, like, just to get there.
I made lots of progress in the last couple of days, like actually have. I was on quite the roll last night, and then I realized it was ten thirty, and I should probably go home, so. But I, yeah, and then once this is done, like, we are, we are golden.
Done with QuickBooks.
We're done with QuickBooks, we're done with trying to balance everything, everything is good, and we're going forward. And this year already has been like twenty twenty-three, everything is in, everything is balanced, everything, it's all good, so.
Bankrupt every day?
Well, yeah, we cash out every day now, not once a week, we're going to the bank every day, like, everything is, is flowing, and, and then once we can get these caught up, and bankrupt, like, everything, there'll be a month in procedure, and everything will be closed on a monthly basis, and it will be heaven compared to the last eighteen months. We can't either.
So, so May the thirteenth, we've already made that motion for them.
Yeah.
Is it ten AM?
Ten to zero one, but that's where we, since we're chomping at pieces and coming in, because this is the tax three.
Yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna put a, obviously, you've gotta advertise this and, okay? So then I guess I would like a motion to approve on June sixth for the special audit meeting?
I'll make that motion.
John, on favor? That is carried, and that's seven PM.
Great, and you wish a good public meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Okay, eight point five, Dentons Water. This is an addendum, and I would like to call Dave Mann to give a little speak, if you would, Dave, you've been working on this thing as a, as a volunteer, and you've had knowledge on this thing going back in well over twenty years since the first started. And I also, due to the nature of this here, I would, anybody that has, in the gallery that has any comments, if you want to bring them up at this, instead of waiting at the end, I will, I would, I'll let you do that, I'll indulge in that, so just raise your hand if you have a question or comment, and we'll deal with it, that's fine. So thank you very much, Dave, so the ball's in your court.
Twenty-one years ago, when I was on council, Jerry Samuel, who was the, he ran the Wizard Lake gas plant for SL, said, well, we're closing it down, you guys should take our water line for a buck from the city, or from the river, the North Saskatchewan River, and the facilities. Yeah, have our own water supply. And then it went through, and they did studies, the one ISL said we'd be stupid or foolish if we didn't do it. So then it got approved, that we bought it, we ended up, the cost was twenty grand, SL's legal fees, of course. And now we have, of course, the plant, the province paid for five million, and it cost us a million? Yeah, about a million, and that's all paid off. Yeah, good, I don't feel it's some cash. So now what we want to do is take it, what I had set up a few years ago, is water to everybody at that time, it was Calmar, Warburg, Breton, Winfield, the lake, people, the eleven different summer villages there wanted. Then we had some inquiries through Donna and the First Nations from Enoch, Paulband, and Sampson Creek.
Look at Sampson.
Sampson Creek, who, all three of them have water that I wouldn't feed my dog. When you can light your kitchen tap on fire, there's something wrong, and they're supposed to drink that water. Federal government approved three hundred and fifty-eight billion dollars to get water to the First Nations. So we're right in the middle of those three. Enoch is close to, be it surrounded by Edmonton, but EPCOR and Enoch are.
Oil and water?
Yeah, and have been for a number of years, so they can get water from us, their money's already approved by the federal government, and we, that line will all get put in for nothing, same with the one to Sampson Creek and to Paulband, we wouldn't have to pay a nickel out of it, because there, each of their shares was thirty-some odd million?
Thirty-some odd million, yeah.
Yeah, and their populations for each one is less than the population of Calmar. So our water plant, we're using between six and eleven percent of its capacity, which is very hard on a plant to run at that, inefficient. It should run at seventy-five percent, and your costs still stay the same, because the filters will dry out if they're not in use, and you're still gonna replace the same filters the same times. So for that, I end in our water license for the North Saskatchewan River is some hundred and sixty-five million gallons a year, of which we use three hundred and twenty.
Eight thousand, it did say, somewhere around that.
A year. So we got lots of water left over, and then the other day, we realized in talking with Dentons, that the town of Thorbsby has a water license to draw from Weet Creek, the same amount of license we have to draw from the Saskatchewan River. So with what's happening in the oil industry, they're all looking for water to pump down hole now, and we have so much water sitting here that we might as well sell the raw water. What everybody wants is raw water. So ATCO is interested, Petrus has got all they want, but the two main, Amaco and the other one in Rocky Mountain else with the big gas domes there, I can never remember their name, they're looking for three hundred trucks, truckloads at three thousand gallons a ton. So I don't know how many cubes that works out to, so there's some good money sitting on the table before we even get into supplying drinking water to everybody. And Dentons has an end with the deputy minister in the federal government, who can get us money for our soft costs, which are engineering, legal, surveying, line locating, and sweeping of where the water lines are gonna go, which is down the highways, in the ditches, and the CPR railway right away, which is what we're on now from Buford to here, is down the CPR or CP rail, whatever you wanna call it. And I don't see any problem with them, because we go right through Warburg, there's a spur that goes off to Breton, and then one that goes off to Winfield. So we can, we don't have to pay any right of ways, all our right of ways, there are existing water line that goes across Glen Park, are all paid up to date, most of them we don't pay, just the two.
Just the two leases to the intake.
Yeah, and the one at Buford, correct. So all the others, and there was a ruling done on it, we can never be asked to pay for any more fees for crossing anybody's land. And since we're going down the highway, the government has a three hundred foot right of way, so.
And what about getting across the river? Would they run a line and insulate it at the bridge level?
Uh, no, there's a Kiara line that goes under the North Saskatchewan River, just south of Devon, yeah, this way of Devon, that is a three foot line with only two lines in it, so they can carry more lines. So we'd run that, and it comes up just a corner of the Botanical Gardens, what are they called now?
Juve.
Yeah, Juve Botanical Gardens, so there, it's just a short hop to Enoch. The one, two, Paulband would of course cross under at the Genesee Bridge, but I've been told that there is a line there too, already going under the bridge, that I didn't know well, under the bridge, but off to the side of it, that goes under there that we might be able to share, and that's paid for by the federal government. That minister can sign up to two million dollars in soft costs on his own signature, and then we'll go for the permanent, which is the total funding of everything for eighty to a hundred million. The province said, the Fed said they'll pay this, and the province had to pay for some of the delivery pipe, like, that'll go to Mamieu and the eleven summer villages around the lake. So we don't have to pay a cent. And we can even in our soft costs, get the engineering and whatever we need to expand our water plant if we have to. We shouldn't have to, according to Water Dave, with the populations of the lake, the Paulband, Enoch, and Sampson Creek, we won't have to expand. We'll be running at about seventy-five to eighty percent capacity of our existing facility.
But if we needed to expand, we could expand.
We just add another train, and that's it, and more capacity under the building, which we own the land, all that land out the side of it to the west. So if we have to, and we'll get a grant to pay for that, because that's part of what we're supplying to the First Nations and to Mamieu. But we would own all, not water, we'd get paid for every gallon of water that leaves that plant, instead of it costing us, I don't know, what does it cost us a year?
Oh, the water treatment plant?
Yeah.
Oh, Dave, I forget that one off the top of my head. Well, just the contractor alone are two hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, if we can make, I don't know, I'm not good enough to do the math, but three hundred, three thousand gallons of truckload, and we need, or they needed three hundred truckloads.
How many gallons?
Three thousand gallons of truckload.
Three thousand gallons, times how many?
Three hundred, and how many cubes is three thousand gallons?
There's four hundred and fifty gallons in a cube.
So divided by four hundred and fifty, times two fifty.
A cube, two dollars and fifty cents a cube.
Cube, yeah, what is that out of?
Five dollars.
No.
There should have been a decimal in there.
Yeah.
So you said three?
Three thousand gallons of truckload.
Right, gallons, okay.
And they need three hundred truckloads, so that's, what, ninety thousand gallons or nine hundred thousand gallons?
Nine hundred thousand gallons.
Okay, divided by four hundred and fifty.
Equal to two thousand.
Cubes.
Cubes.
Times two fifty a cube.
Two dollars and fifty, yeah, forty-five thousand dollars.
No.
That's what I said. We're gonna be rich, no?
That's not what I worked it out to, but anyways, we can charge.
Maybe I'm wrong on the four hundred and fifty gallons.
Hang on, I got a converter here.
I'm sure, anyhow, it's something to look at, and I mean, the thing is with the, with the federal government, you know, I mean, what we've seen in the last little while, there'd be a lot of promises to the First Nation people to provide water, and when we met with Minister Wilson a while ago, you know, he was all for this, and both the Paulband and Enoch were very supportive of anything we did, so I mean, you know, this is all, this certainly isn't in concrete, but I mean, you have to start with this, and it's there, if we can, if we can tap into it, it's, go ahead, Steve.
So it looks like there's huge reward to the community. What is the risk to the community if we go down this road? Like, I fail to see where there's a large risk to, to this direct.
The risk is time, time and effort putting in to do it, something that probably should have done, we've been doing over the past twenty years, we'd probably be there by now. But it's a slow process, it doesn't happen overnight, you, you have to kick the tires, you have to talk to these people, you have to look for partners, and you look to the government, and I mean, they're handing out a million, like I said, you know, the Fed, or the province just gave out three hundred and thirty million to Calgary for an arena. So what's, what's a few million dollars for them for?
For us.
For water, for us, right?
Yeah, that's, that's where, like.
It's just, it's just, it's just knowing the right people to talk to, knowing the right connections, and this is, in my opinion, this is where Dentons is heads above everybody. They've done this, they know the people, they know the contacts, you know, the, as Dave mentioned, you know, they have, they have a person on staff, and he's not a lawyer, but he's a consultant, and he's, he's, he's on first name basis and talks to the deputy minister, federal deputy minister involved with this all the time, and he's, he's speculating that there's a lot of money that they can provide to us for this. So we have to take the first step, and that's the risk, I guess, just.
And what is the first step? What's the risk?
First thing is.
Taking the step? I feel.
None of it, if we get all the engineering studies paid for it.
Yeah, this is where I'm saying, like.
It's not gonna cost us any.
It does not sound like there's a whole bunch of risk aggressive.
No.
Down this road.
It sounds too good to be true.
Yeah. And I, I have my, in the back of my head, but when I see a water license that you can't get anymore, and we have two, you can't get these water licenses anymore.
Water is a huge commodity that is gonna be.
Worth more than gold.
A lot of water in my lifetime.
Like, this one was originally done in nineteen fifty-three, and they don't do these anymore. You have to renew them, and you pay big bucks every five years, and if it's oil based, it's renewed every year. So you gotta pay through the nose to get these. Nose to get these, this can never be canceled on us.
And that's a huge card to lay on the table when we're at.
Oh.
Well, we're, we're, we just kind of keep taxing everybody death to death. We just get some other revenue, go ahead.
Is there any kind of environmental impact for us drawing water from Weed Creek or?
Not until we cross the levels of.
Or the, like, with the increased levels, when I've talked about, like, is there any kind of environmental impact that we're?
I, I think, I think that, you know, we, we creek, you know, I mean, that used to be our, our source before, and then the problem was, you know, we passed it from here to Breton.
And that water was bad, that's why our pipes were so flooded.
Yeah, and we're, we're talking potable water, we're not talking treatable water for the creek, right? So I mean, you're taking it out of there, you don't, you don't treat it, and, and I suppose, I mean, would we deplete the water, water source, I, I don't.
Well, but that's, that's two separate things.
It is, correct.
Oh, yeah, there's two.
You're not drawing that water.
To drink.
Through the plant, that's getting sold by a truck.
That's our diversion, our diversion licenses.
To push down hole. Now, the big thing for the increase, you know, the shield drops here, the Canadian Shield, and that's where the whole oil from Laduke all the way to Rocky Mountain House and east of us. What they found is an eight percent solution of lithium. Well, if you could pump lithium out of the ground in liquid, instead of doing what they're doing with these big mines in Africa and killing people, why wouldn't you do it? But they need millions and millions and millions of gallons of water to pump down these old wells. They flood them, they're sour gas wells that aren't being used anymore. And it's that sour gas that brings the lithium out of the rock formations. So we're gonna have a boom in lithium, you know, distilling plants. Lithium won't kill you if you look at it or smell it, but just don't hit lithium battery with a hammer, because it'll blow up. But if they can run an eight percent solution when they're digging holes in the earth for two percent, and we've got eight percent in our affluent produced water, why wouldn't you build a plant to separate it out? And you can't get one of these licenses anymore, where are you gonna get it from?
What was the date of that license?
Nineteen fifty-three.
What's the other date? There used to, there were two, like.
Nineteen seventy-four, oh, hold it, that's asshole. Taxicole is nineteen fifty-one, I believe. Fifty-three and.
That's all right, you can tell me later.
Yeah, they're old, like Taxicole, I mean, they're not even around anymore in the water business. And because I think it was nineteen fifty-one, I'm looking for the right page here, oh, here we are.
That's okay, you can tell me later. Nineteen fifty-three for the North Saskatchewan.
Yeah, and nineteen, oh, and nineteen fifty-one for the Weed Creek.
And if we had to get a bigger diversion license out of the North Saskatchewan with regional water, we just apply.
We just apply.
We just apply for it, and one of the technologies we're looking at too, once we get through this, is, is sleeving all the water pipes in town, because this would help, so you don't dig them up.
Yeah.
You sleeve them, and, and you don't have to dig up the streets, you just dig up an access hole, put it in, and when there's a, there's a bend in the pipe, depending on the slope, you can, you can change the sleeving so that it bends over or fails off or adheres to the slope of the, of the land, and then it's easy, it's easier to replace those. Arlington National Cemetery just did this, they saved thirty-five million because all their pipes were let, so they sleeved them all. You just dig an access corridor, you know, four or five feet deep, six feet deep, very narrow, you go down and inject. So you don't.
Directional.
Yeah, it's like directional drilling, and you don't bust up your town, right? So now you're not disturbing the strata, because we all know every time you dig up, you just have to look beside the mayor's house there, we've got a hot tub there, because it's so saturated that ground, we have to leave it open, we can't fill it with gravel or anything, it's gonna dry out from the lava.
Because we're built on the, the whole town.
Yeah, yeah, so there's those kind of improvements that can be made. We chose, we chose Dentons law firm for two reasons, one, you don't have the same municipal lawyer doing this.
Yeah.
Because we were from a water corporation, and so you need lawyers for a water corporation. Dentons are well-respected worldwide, they have sixty-six offices worldwide, they have the connections. Their most senior partner, Dick Carter, lives in our area, he owns land here in town. He's very, very supportive of water, and they have the connections to open the doors and we go for that. When, when Dave mentioned this deputy minister, this, this staff member inside Dentons can phone him up, say you want to meet in Winnipeg for golf.
Oh, wow.
Like, that's how it is.
Yeah.
So water distribution is key, because we're coming off the aquifers, and we do have a First Nations lady here in, in Thorisby that came to see me and said, anytime you need me to speak about what happens on the water of First Nations, I will, because she said I ended up with cancer with it, and David's, right? F Corp supplies water to Enoch Creek Resort, and that's it.
Twelve bucks a cube.
Twelve bucks a cube.
That's, that's how we're rolling.
Treaty six, they're supposed to get their water, right, treaty six, eight, four, and two, they're supposed to, that's part of the clean promise.
And they said, we don't have enough water to send to the, the First Nation, to Enoch.
Yeah.
Well, then they go and build a subdivision of up two of them, up to one side of the reserve and, and get water to them. Then they feed Atchison, but they haven't got enough to feed the Enoch band.
Yeah. You know. The other thing with Enoch, no, no, I do too, because they're, they're, well, Enoch is also, my agreement to David, and Enoch's one of our corporate clients as well, but Enoch is taking over Buffalo Island, and they're looking and making a bid to look after the whole river valley. Get away from Edmonton, look at the whole river valley. There comes water with, with water distribution licensing through them as well, through treaty. And if we, if we have to add on to our license, whether it be through us or through treaty, once that license is added on through treaty, it could never, ever be taken away.
Yeah.
Ever.
It's just like these, you never get them again.
Never.
So with that license, is there an environmental impact tied to how much water you're drawing?
Yeah.
So they, they issued this in nineteen fifty-three, I would have assessed the environmental impact different today than in nineteen fifty?
Yeah, but this refers to nineteen fifty-three.
No, that's what I'm saying.
You can't change this.
Yeah.
And we're stuck with nineteen fifty-three environmental regulations.
It's a lot, right?
It took, yeah. Yeah, and it took Dentons down near a month to dig down to find, the government couldn't find our license. That's how old it is, it's unheard of. Because they don't give, they haven't given them out for thirty years, forty years. And it's.
That over expires now.
Never expires.
Nothing written in there that it dries out.
No. And we're in environment stuff here twice a year, they, they monitor our water treatment plant, they monitor our raw pond, they monitor our, our brown water and our raw pond, right, because the oil pond goes into the brown water pond, right? See, everyone out there, we'll take you out there, it's kind of cool, just don't eat the ducks. And, and so they monitor all that, we, we discharge into Weed Creek, we have to, but that stuff from the raw pond, it's from the brown, and it's anaerobically treated in the raw pond. So you just don't hit anaerobic stuff that eats all the solids, I guess we'll call it that.
And ATCO is now wanting to buy everybody sewage pumps.
Yeah.
Because they need the water to pump down the hole.
That's right. So then we have a controlled release, we have to apply to our environment and say we have this much brown water. It tests at this, there's this in it, and this in it, and this in it, and they approve the release. We don't release early, we only release when we get the approval. Pinoka got trapped a few years ago, town of Pinoka, probably about five, six years ago, where they released too quickly into the Battle River, didn't send in the report, didn't get permission, and it was an eighty thousand dollar fine. They dropped it from one twenty-five, so we're very careful. Water Dave is very careful about this kind of stuff. And so, yes, that's, that's how we protect the environment that way in the, in the discharge.
Data Lake, one thing they'd like to see Thorisby do is take on a bit more land within its boundaries to put in a wetland.
Yeah.
Which stores, you know, millions of gallons of water, and there's trees around it and geese and ducks and all that, and when the Weed Creek is low, then we draw from that to sell raw water.
Yeah.
That's the only thing they, they allow us to divert thirteen hundred gallons a minute of Weed Creek.
Yeah. The timing of our, our grant on this, that, that study we're doing feasibility, it's gonna help us in this year, because it's determined all of our infrastructure costs. We can pass on to these ministers and they will have a definitive amount that, what it's gonna cost to do this, so.
We're looking at a total cost of eighty to a hundred million. And if each band gets, they're thirty-five million, that's it right there, and then the profits kicks in, the rest, if we need to upgrade our, you know, add another train to our plant and dig more storage, because as we go to the lake, we have four lift stations that we have to install, they all have to have an air brake. But each of those stations has to hold so many thousands of gallons of water, and then when we get to the top of the hill, we have the land set aside already free of charge. We build a big reservoir, a concrete reservoir with a roof that will store so many thousands of gallons of water, and yet, and then it'll go to each cabin or molars, you know, everybody, just like the sewer does now. And we'll use their same right of way, so it doesn't cost us anything.
And then how is the cost figured out, like, how we would charge the First Nations?
We don't have to charge them anything, that's the engineers figure it out. And they tell the government, this is your share for, what, all we care about is getting the water line to the edge of treaty six. After that, that's the Fed's problem. We just put a meter at their property line, and that's it.
Okay, so that we can set the rate as long as it's within the realm of.
Yeah, reality.
Effective reality, yeah.
Whatever our plant cost us to run, plus thirty percent, and usually you're good. We may have to go to forty because costs, geez, everything goes up, you know.
And, and if, let's, let's say, for example, Enoch has decided to transfer to stations or with, with rigs and stuff, because they got a huge pipeline crew sitting right there and so forth, then they would charge, they would charge them for, for water and we'd get a percentage off that, and they'd get the rest, that's how it would work.
We always get our.
Yeah, yeah, there's always a cut.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right, and you'd have different charging rates.
Lower your rates for the rate here in town?
Hopefully.
And here profits, what I want to put in the corporation documents is any profits made, or all the profits that are made, go into an account for replacing water lines. Sewer lines, valves, so that, because let's face it, our stuff is starting to crap out, oops, sorry, fail on us.
You know what?
Yeah. And it's costing us money we don't have, and all we can get now is seventy-five, twenty-five grants. Well, with this whole show, we might be able to get a few of our blocks, our neighborhoods done without costing us anything. Which, to me, is worth it. Especially when they'll even pay for costs that we've already paid for out of that money. And then you look at, at Dr. Sturgis, I mean, that lady's the queen of water. Down the rank.
You did, you're okay.
She's the queen of water, and they want to work with us, and so does ATCO, although I trust her more than. Sorry. But they want to help us get everything set up, they'll do all, figure out all the buildings, you know, what's fair, what and that grant will be paid for by the Fed, the deputy minister in Ottawa.
We, we can't do this with Matthew Graham.
Yeah.
So we have to go broke or go home?
We don't have the money, we don't have five grand for sidewalks.
Yeah, oh, I, I get it.
And now I'm worried, because you say you can't make things balance.
Oh, I can make them balance, it's just taking time, not that I can't. They'll, they'll balance, I got twenty twenty-one to work, it's just a little nuances in twenty twenty-two, don't worry, Dave.
But that's my whole thing about, we have this, let's get it going, and let's go after the grant. I mean, there's a list of twelve ministers that Dentons already talked to, that we gotta go see. And they want all this done by June. And I'm, hold it, what do you mean by June? All your preliminary, we want that grant in place, and the firsthand, what they call preliminary approval for the eighty million dollars to put it all in. June's a month away. That's the speed they're moving at.
So who's traveling where to?
I'm not going anywhere, I don't like to fly, and I can't, because of my kicker, so he's gotta go.
You mean Mayor?
And, yeah.
Because they usually have ministers meetings in the daytime, right? So what we would do is have the ministers meeting, then we'd have the department calls right away.
Yeah.
Do the decisions that have to be.
In Ottawa?
I don't think we'll have to go to Ottawa.
Winnipeg, probably.
Probably Winnipeg, I don't know yet, I don't know. If I have to go somewhere, I've got enough points, you'd have to pay for me.
I don't know, we're quite.
He can manage that, you go.
You're looking for any good deals on that, yeah, so.
Now, one of the things that, that is coming from this, why we're giving a lot of background when we're informing the community, is that, of course, Water Smart, we, we presented to you in November, their grant, they, they need thirty-one thousand to get started, that's all included, will be included in this, in this soft grasp, the self-cost. Dentons, as, there's a cost to us, to have Dentons help us, and it is ten thousand dollars. Cindy and I have searched things, and we do have the money for ten thousand dollars and to get a hundred million applied in, that's, that's what this is. And so I understand that this is money, I understand that Thorisby is in almost a stable position, almost a stable position.
Yeah, but I wanted Dentons to wait two months for their money, and then that way we could have the grant by then.
Well, we could, and if you could talk to me just a couple months, that's fine.
No.
But they, they've asked, asked for this to get started, and they've asked for nothing else, it's, it's, they're ready to send their gun to Ottawa right away and, and start talking about this. I know it's a big ask, I get it, I understand it, but Thorisby has, they're back to the law. We cannot tax any further, we, we might have to five or six, he might make some decisions in May, might be five or six, we don't know, maybe seven, it'll be twenty-eight, but we are, we're at the lowest cuts we can do with, with infrastructure, staffing, people are volunteering their time, staff are coming in on their own time, like, we, we can't cut any further. Well, we probably could a little bit yet, but we'll figure that out on the eleventh, and hopefully we have some members of the public to help us out here. But this is to get a hundred million, this is the only ask Dentons is asking for us, so they can deploy their resources for us. So administration is asking council to consider the presentation this evening. You're caught up to speed with what we know, a lot of this just came in, some of it came in this morning, so we're, that's where you're getting a lot more than, than is written. We're, I guess it's seed money, so Dentons loses in Ottawa.
Yeah, on our behalf.
On our behalf, and with our transportation for right of way stuff.
Yeah.
Because then that saves us a ton of time.
And nobody can, no county can stand in our way.
No, there's nothing to worry about, Akron County, I do have a meeting with the county manager tomorrow at seven forty-five in the morning, just enough, enough task for anything.
So I mean, no letter of support?
Letter of support, be neighborly, because we really, not that we don't need them, it's, we're just gonna be neighborly, we're preliminary stuff right now.
So they ask us for ten thousand dollars to be approved to pay Dentons for this.
Yeah.
Legal fees.
Yeah, we've got a couple of resolutions here, so. Anybody else?
I would agree with that motion.
Okay.
My only question on all this, we've got a lot of discussion and information and research that you've done and other people have done, and and meetings that have helped, but there's nothing so far at all that's, has proposed date for finalizing anything.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if you needed ten thousand dollars, one of these oil companies or somebody else could ante up to without.
Well.
You know, without.
But we were told to leave it with them, and we'll get it from the Feds.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there is, I mean, how even the chamber contribute to that money, and I've had a few residents tell me they'd give me a thousand bucks apiece. And I'd be one of them, you know, yeah, and.
No, I mean, it shouldn't be a hard thing to.
Oh, it's not a hard thing to get, and I'm sure if we hit Petrus, they would give it, but I don't want to wait and have to wait for those decisions. Uh, Denton's is already ready to do this tomorrow, they're just waiting on the, the motion and be accepted by Thursby and then bang, we're off to the races.
So, okay, so you, um, Tracy had a, had a motion here, so we do the other one first though, I mean, does it matter?
No, it doesn't matter, we can.
Yeah, so you made a motion to provide ten thousand dollar fee for Denton's?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, on favor, that is carried. Okay, the second motion that we're looking for is that, uh, the council resolution that, uh, Council of Towne-Thursby resolves that, one, the opinion of Denton's Canada LP dated April fifth, be reserved as information. The administration is authorized to retain Denton's Canada LP to apply for funding assistance for the Water Smart proposal and any other expenditures attributable to the review and provision of regional water services by the Towne-Thursby. And thirdly, administration and town was hereby tasked with exploring with the federal and provincial governments the available funding for grants and other financial assist, assistance to extend and improve the Towne-Thursby's water treatment and distribution system for the benefit of the town. Second, John, you wanna make that motion, thank you, on favor? Carrie, thank you very much, I mean, you know, it is pretty exciting, this stuff, it's just, it's, it's, I, I, I get it, I mean, it, it sounds too good to be true, but it's a lot of work and then it, it's very time consuming, but they wanna move very fast on it and, uh.
Sure, a partner, the main part, one of the main partners for Denton's in Canada phoned me Friday, Saturday and Sunday and dropped bombs on me that. No, we talked to them, they've already talked to the deputy minister ahead of schedule. And I'm like, you know what, you, you gotta slow down, no, I want this done before you guys have your joint council meeting. Okay, I'm not gonna get near it.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, the guy has a, I don't know how many, him and his buddy Randy Gray and all of the other judges on John Sonya, million-dollar cabins, they can't even drink the water out of. And then the people that are really gonna back us is Pigeon Lake watershed, because the level of the lake is really down this year because of lack of runoff. But there's over five thousand wells drawing water from that water table and six out of the eleven, or is it five out of the eleven springs have gone dry that feed that lake. Well, when you're sucking that much water out of five thousand wells, so they're, they're giving us a big letter of support. And hopefully they'll get money to go pay for it all.
We're, we're clearly not greedy, we wanna help the region, we wanna help ourselves.
Yeah.
The corporation will be set up with the realist of Thursby, understanding what it is and town council.
And that they own it.
And if they own it and, uh, this isn't, nothing's gonna be hidden and, uh, I.
I just think it's something we need to start doing that we should have been doing twenty years ago when Jerry came to us the first time, when I was our council, and that's what I wanted to do. But if, unless you have a council that's forward-thinking, we can't just keep taxing people to death.
You're done. Is it fair to say there's, uh, cards on the table now that sort of weren't there ten years ago?
Oh.
Like, uh, ninety million or a hundred million from that federal government?
I'm just seeing a whole bunch of little pieces.
That's Denton's.
Weren't there before, maybe.
I didn't have, uh, provincial, well, I did, until it, it circled over and then all of it was great. Um, now that the PCs are back and there's election coming, they're trying to, they're not buying, should say that, they want, you know, approve grants.
At my vote.
Yeah, and, uh, so that political, as well as the federal government's election in twenty twenty-four, could be this, we don't know.
It, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's time consuming, I mean, like, uh, this council, we've been a year and a half, right? And we, was one of our things that we wanted to do and it's taken us a year and a half just to get this, but now it's moving very fast.
Denton's wants to pick it up and run with it, we still have to go to these, uh, minister and deputy minister meetings and all that, but they're gonna do all the legwork for us so that we just go and, you know.
So is the feasibility. What's this Denton's getting out of this? Just a question, just a question.
Only the legal fees?
Yeah.
And an antique texticle sign. Don't, don't act like in the soft costs, their legal fees will be covered. But Dick Carter is a, a great human being, his mom had a lot of, uh, stuff to do with Texaco and he just asked, I just asked him point blank, do you want out of this? Like, talk is cheap, what do you want? I want an antique texticle sign for my mom.
Get looking.
So if anybody has.
How about Calmar?
A buddy is, with an old tech, I don't care what it costs me, I'll buy it myself and give it to him. So an old texticle sign, if anybody has one, find it, I'll buy it.
That was awesome.
But the other side of the coin is you look at Denton's and you have, um, Kevin Fien, who is now Justice Fien and his dad was a Supreme Court Justice. You have Ian Wacherman, whose dad was a Supreme Court Justice, they all worked for Denton's. And I've worked with those fellows in the past in political arena. And the arena they move in, I move in going door to door for an MLA, they move with the preachers. And they move the same with federal government people. I mean, I couldn't get doors open, but they could.
Yeah.
There was just no way. And, uh, it, it, it just makes me feel good that Dick wants to do this so bad for Thursby. I'll be, because he has his cabin, he likes drinking water and he does own land in town. But he said to me that it's unfortunate that the only way you can make money as a town is by taxes or implementing a policy where you pay for your garbage, you pay for this, you pay for that, you pay, which is just another tax.
Yeah, oh, for sure.
He says, you have to have a council that's forward-thinking. You know, the next thing he says you guys should look at is power generation, and I'm like, uh, no. Yeah, I said, let's get this one going first, but he is so behind it, it just blows me away. And you guys can attest to that, in those meetings, um, nobody talks against him, he says to the other lawyers there, you'll do this, you'll do that, and you'll do that, okay, done.
We can assure you from an administrative level that when Cindy and I first came out here at behalf of the mayor and council, we came out here to fix the mess, but we also came out here altruistically, I guess, professionally, professionally also, to fix this town, to give you a future. We're not here for the money, we're not here for the glory, we're not here because we wanna make a name for ourselves as consultants, or knows we're really with other clients and our, with definite practices. That's not what it's about here, it's about to save this town, because this town is a great little agricultural town, it's situated in a beautiful spot, it has capability of being, uh, anything it wants to be, uh, perhaps an agriculture manufacturing center, clean, no, no smokestacks, none of that, you know, there's, there's also its opportunity. There's opportunity for the residents finally, maybe they have no taxes after a while, none, um, and, uh.
I still wanna build an eighty-foot statue in bronze of four and get Disney involved in it and all that and, you know, I mean, that's.
I can't see another option.
Another option, no way.
I can't, yeah, that makes us money.
There, there is zero, zero, like, I, I just don't see any, uh, forward.
We can't do fifty-fifty raffles.
Thor and Pierogies.
Yeah, Thor and Pierogies.
Well, when, when we're here that we're, how much in a deficit?
Well, over ten years, one point three million dollars.
It's accelerating, um, assuming that the pandemic sort of helped.
It accelerated.
It accelerated.
Well, decisions made during the pandemic helped it accelerate.
But I just, I, I don't see a path forward that shrinks that ever, there isn't.
There isn't, without taxing you by death.
Well, but that's not an option.
It's not, because.
Literally, we don't have money left, because we're on the community.
Literally, uh, because a, a one percent tax increase brings us in approximately fourteen thousand dollars, that's it. You can't do anything, that doesn't even cover the wage increases that the union gives.
No.
Like, so it's, it's impossible to grow this community strictly on taxes. And right now, like, the water and sewer is paying for itself, it should be paying for itself.
Yeah.
It's not, so taxes are, well, are subsidizing a, a fee-for-service thing, that it's, like, it should be, but, I mean, either way, you're paying. But it is with water and sewer, you control that because you control your consumption.
Yeah.
Right? So if you're paying, if you're, so every taxpayer is subsidizing somebody who uses excessive amounts of water, basically, right? So, um, those are other things that I need to look at too, because I don't think it, I think it should pay for itself, you should pay for what you use. You should pay for it, not the rest of the town should pay for it, in fact. Um, yeah, and this will just help decrease the cost per person using water, because we're selling it to more people.
That's right, and, and you know, when you think about it, you have, you know, we're done paying for that water treatment plant in a couple of years, I think.
Yeah, in twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
A bunch of years, that'd save us, what are we paying a year on that?
I'll bring that up, I'll bring it up.
Twenty-something, twenty, is it twenty-seven thousand, I think, or something, we pay three hundred sixty thousand a year roughly into.
Into venture payments.
The loans to the provincial government.
Yeah.
We gotta cut that down, we're gonna start, we, we're gonna have some, uh, lease, leasing options in the budget, you know, we're gonna stop buying equipment and lease it. Um, maybe we can fix your sewer system at West Tower, wouldn't that be fun? All those kinds of things, right? They were tired of pumping it out, come on.
Oh, yeah, the guy saved it. Andrew does not like seeing my notes fall.
No, he does, but, and, and you know, sometimes, like, you've had a jam for years and it's not a criticism, it's not, um. I guess, I, I guess maybe Cindy and I are excited about this, and we hope you are too, all of you in jam, you know, council is, we're not afraid. We're not afraid, when you're back to the law in your business, you go for it.
That's, uh, you have to move forward.
It's not like we have to put out a hundred million, we don't, we're going to get a hundred million. And, uh, eighty million to a hundred, we're gonna go as much as they'll give us. And, uh, uh, it will be so gratifying, Dave, that the mayor can call the council meeting or a, maybe a town hall meeting.
Yeah.
And tell you what we've done, we are relentless. Um, among every other thing we gotta do for the municipality, we are relentless in this, plus everything else we do.
And we're stubborn.
And we're stubborn.
It's not permanent, it's determined.
It is very determined.
What that is.
Yeah, it is.
It's never dead, stubborn.
Cindy and I probably put in three days, probably sixty hours, three days roughly, um, here just doing our thing, and that's okay, we signed up for that and we're happy about that. So we wanna help you succeed, um, and if the rumor mill's out there that we're trying to get glory, no, we're not, it's true, that's, that's how, that's how it works. So we appreciate the motion tonight, we appreciate, uh, everything, we're gonna rock and roll now some more.
Appreciate all the questions.
And all the questions, love it, uh, the sort of council is supposed to be full of questions, full of anticipation, full of, full of good information. So, um, um, with that, I yield back to Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, exactly, it's, it's exciting and, I mean, we can sit here and, uh, it's, it's, it, it takes a lot of work and then we kicked a lot of tires just to get where we're at here and, uh, we're not gonna stop, so, thank you very much, Dave, for, um, presenting that to us and all your work and everything and everyone else.
The motions, that's great, because we'll go forward now.
Yeah, I just, I, I hope it comes through.
The way.
Buckle up, man.
Yeah.
Buckle up, yeah.
I hope it comes through, that's all I can say. Everyone is your lack of effort, uh, lack of effort on our part, that's all I can say.
I don't see Denton's making statements that they don't intend to keep, let's put it that way.
Mr. Mayor, what I'd like one more resolution though, is that you preclude Mr. Mann from phoning me on Sunday morning and getting me out of church when I'm not in church.
Uh, sorry, but you're hard luck in that.
You're not, don't, don't. Timically, they care.
Oh, geez, don't do that when I know.
Would you like, I just know you had a mouthful, excuse me, I just meant to say you're still talking. All right, moving forward, eight point six, uh, we're gonna talk about the parade, go ahead, they're, uh, you're, you're, you're good.
Good.
Let's go.
Well, I'm supposed to follow up after them.
What? Say what you can do.
Well, I sent an email to everybody and, uh, thought we need to get on board and figure out if we're going to do something for the parade as council or if we're to participate. And I'm not sure if everybody got the response, cause I didn't look to see who got the response, but Donna, CEO Donna had suggested that you and Andrew were going to be on the fire truck here. And then if we wanted to jump on the fire truck, we can jump on the fire truck. Um, I, I had suggested a dealership, maybe we could approach to see if they wanna bring out vehicles to put in the parade that the council could ride in. And CEO Donna suggested that maybe I have connections with Lexus and that I can make something happen. So I thought, well, yes, I do. So I put it out to Lexus and asked them and, uh, they're waiting to hear back from us, from this meeting, if we have interest in them bringing out a couple of vehicles and a couple of drivers to parade the mayor and possibly four council members around, but I wasn't sure which council members were interested or the mayor interested in riding in the Lexus vehicles. So we don't have an answer from Cory and Shelley, I think, has said that she has an appointment midday, but she could make it for the parade and she'd be fine with that. Um, I don't know about John.
I don't know my work schedule, if I'm here, absolutely, I will.
Yeah, long weekend is, uh.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second.
They're shooting roughly, go back on the fifteenth, so.
It'd be nice if, you know, if we could have a float, but we don't have the, we don't have the money, we don't have the time. There's a fire engine, everybody loves that, you're worshiped.
Yeah, of course, the Lexus is gonna cost us.
Nothing.
Okay. But I mean, I certainly, certainly, if you can get me a ride, I'll jump in, that's all I can say.
You'll turn it up?
Yeah, and I was just, me and Donna were talking about your email too, and in my experience with parades and chambers, like, the chambers put on the parade and the Duke, and they would arrange vehicles for all the dignitaries.
Yeah.
Parade organizers normally do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would call the dealerships and say, we have MLA, the MP, the mayor and whatever, and they would, they would supply.
Well, that's why Tracy's in.
Yeah.
Doing it for the chamber. And, uh, I like that idea, if we can get the more we can get out, the better, we must have a little banner we can take to the door handle or something.
There's magnets that can.
Oh, you've got magnets, they're here in the office, we know where they are this year, finally, so that's good. I'm sure we're gonna participate, Steve's following me.
Who is that?
Calmar, comment?
Okay, good.
Now I gotta show up.
Yeah, that's great.
So confirmation still has to come from Lexus end, but, uh, they were waiting to hear back from me as to what I thought we needed. And they proposed two vehicles and the two drivers.
Oh, oh, I, that's fun, I, oh, and I got the, the Warburg, uh, bus, they were the cheapest. And, uh, Shawna phoned Chris there and, uh, Dave, their political works manager, Dave is gonna drive it, so it'll save us about a thousand bucks in bus rentals.
For Gord Bamford?
For Gord Bamford, sorry, yeah, I keep getting those two mixed up, I'm sorry.
Different event.
Different event.
I'm thinking we, we couldn't, you're in the parade, then maybe you have the.
Things together.
I'm going out for smoke, I'll be, I'll be back.
So if you guys are in agreement, I can still approach them and get confirmation on that, their general manager might come back and say, no, it's not gonna work, but.
Mel's there. We have candy, we have everything ready.
My neighbors can do with their own, they don't need me there to. They can do it on me.
All right, I will let Lexus, South Point Lexus know.
Where are they, they're at South Evans?
Yeah, at Ellersley Road.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's right, okay, perfect, that's good, I love it.
All right.
See, I think we need any. I don't think we need any motion anything on that, so. No, we wish we don't. Okay, uh, okay, moving along, we'll, we'll respond, just put the end here, twelve point one, Towne-Thursby Alberta Municipality's insurance information packets. Alberta Municipalities Insurance Information Package. Donna, do you want to comment on that? Yeah, we put that in just so you could see. We had, Cindy and I had a four-and-a-half-hour meeting with AMFC, and we started here in the morning, and then we went for lunch and kept on going until three in the afternoon because we grilled them and they grilled us.
And no, we weren't drinking.
And we weren't drinking. I didn't want to. But we, we really hashed out our insurance. We went through everything, went through every issue, and if I missed anything, Cindy, let me know. But basically, we put, we put the presentation booklet in here for, for you to look at. It kind of tells you that our insurance is on at nine point five percent this year, so we're paying one eighteen for one of seven. We did put in new insurance this year on the lagoon, on the, like, the lagoons of the Storpon for environmental and the environmental liability, and, and we just about got the insurance register cleaned up. They've, they're going to work with me next year to make sure we've got absolutely everything that we're supposed to have here. So we have first the crime liability, your premium is two thousand twenty-six. The next schedule is environmental, just if we go to environmental impairment liability.
Oh, I'll finish your phone.
Yeah, I'm just going to go to your environment, that's okay. Your environmental, on page one seventy-seven. I'm on the right page. I'll leave your box for that. Let me see. Crime, after crime, one seventy-six, yeah, one seventy-seven. There you go. Awesome. So our, our premium there is, we have an average two-year premium of two thousand twenty-four. This is a, this is a new one for us, and it talks about pollution, cleanup costs, those kinds of things. So it's worth it. If we go to the next one, it's cyber liability. This protects us in case somebody decides to put a bot in our system and hold us for ransom, and it, you need that, and that's at five million. Our, our premium is included in the insurance package. We kind of negotiated that. Our automobile policy premium is sixteen thousand because of all the automobiles we have and all the amount of, of the specialized vehicles we have are, yeah, that's, let me see. I'm flipping through this quick here. Our liability insurance is, our liability insurance is legal liability is roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. If we'd have known about some of the settlements, we'd have had to do from the year before. If it would have happened when we were here, we could have called our insurance company. We have terrorism, and that's to protect you from Cindy and I. Deductible. So basically, our property, we have upped the insurance properly on the property, and that's at fifteen million. Like, I mean, that's a premium. I don't care.
It's not the premium.
Sorry. That's the extra premium that we have, and our civil authority is thirty days for some of that. So the change is worth noting. If we go to that page, Jesse, that's going to be easier because I don't have to go through the whole thing. But, and Cindy, you can speak to the deductions and the benefits. But our property was changed, went up a little bit, one point one percent, only because we added the right stuff on and took the right stuff off. Our property of terrorism is included, and, and it has a million limit. Our equipment breakdown, so that's boilers and so forth. That went, that went down minus thirty-five percent because we haven't had a claim because we've been paying for it ourselves because of the boilers. There's no point claiming it right now if we can afford to pay for it. Our general liability is up twenty percent, and that's, that's just different things that have happened. Our environmental impairment liability went up two percent because we added a little bit and insured with Zurich. And I can indicate that our company's insured with Zurich for a lot of our insurance, and it's very good coverage. Automobiles, of course, went up eighty percent because we had to add automobiles, and we took some off that were there, so we had to actually be honest. Our non-owned automobile liability went up ten percent, and that's what the London underwriting is, well, that's our, our equipment. Our cyber liability is included in the policy. Our crime is fourteen percent, only because we upped it on purpose because we just, we just don't know, right? And the, I think the benefits went up some.
Yeah, the benefits went up mostly just due to usage. We have a very high usage of benefits. So our, our benefit premiums did not go up as much as the usage went up because being part of the pool, that helps, and then they don't always increase. They try to level out the increase that you don't like, but it's gone up just like everything else. But I don't think COVID helps the situation.
No.
Our usage goes because it seems to be that the psychological is up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking just at the, just at the, just at the sheet. Everything here and here is replacement value, right?
Yes.
Hundred percent.
Yes. This year, yes, we're not going there because we can't afford to replace anything.
Is this for two thousand and three, yeah, two thousand and four?
Two thousand and twenty-three. They go year at a time.
Just year at a time.
Year at a, yeah, that's what they do. There you go.
Yeah.
You're welcome. It's a pretty charge there. So we just wanted to let you know, and we'll, we'll get it more streamlined next year again. This will start working on that in September, and that's just to give you a really good idea and keep that, any kind of insurance questions. I just, I just wish on some of it, we could have invoked our liability insurance, grapple dismissal, et cetera, et cetera.
At what point, oh, sorry, John. At what point will we be turning to leased equipment? Will that affect this?
We're, not necessarily. The leased equipment will be insured above the same, but where we're going to save is we'll kill or debenture as much as we can. So we're hoping to have a good report for you when it comes on the eleventh of May. We may bring Brent Tractor in as well on that Saturday to provide some information. Yeah, so it's, it's more to save debenture, debenture room.
Well, the, the lease payments would have to be less than the debenture payment.
Yeah, that's right.
In order to save cash.
That's right. So we'll, we'll take a good clear eye of that.
So are we just accepting this information as our new...
Yeah.
Turning it down?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take the whole group along. Hopefully, we've got a lot more to go.
Actually, a pretty nice presentation that they put together. Cindy did understand.
And they spent a lot of, they spent a lot of time without...
A lot better than what they had with the other guys.
Yeah, well, we, we had some major concerns regarding the insurance and the benefits and the cost and all that stuff, and they spent, well, five and a half hours with us to go over, go over all of this and explain it and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions on the insurance? Twelve point two, a letter from Peter Cowie, the Parks and Rec Awards. So they're looking for anything to do with Alberta recreation and parks. They're presenting several awards in October, so there's a website there for more details if anybody wants to nominate anybody towards these awards. Certainly, anybody in the community, it's all up there, and that's about it. Yeah, we've got a lot of great people in the union that can... Absolutely. It's, once again, it's a Latun Government Award, but it's a little different than the other ones because this was strictly with recreation and parks. So I would leave a motion to accept the insurance and the recreational awards for information.
I'll make the motion.
See, John, on favor. That is carried. That conducts everything in here. Does anybody go, have any other questions? A lot of stuff to...
Is it related to the water there for a time frame? On that, are we looking at something that we're looking for completion, five years, ten years, another ten years?
No, no. Or, once, if I may, you're... Shelley, go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Once we hear from that, we're hoping you will be able to understand when we can, when we get the engineering done. The industry is probably going to cost about a million, et cetera. Once we have that, we have all the soft costs covered, then we'll, we'll be looking for a pipeline partner. We hope to be pipeline, and I'm hoping by, I don't know, spring or...
It's probably September.
September, not sure.
There isn't enough ADP pipe in Alberta to put in yet, so...
We would have to wait till spring of twenty twenty-four or late, late winter.
See, if you're pushing it, you don't have to wait till spring because we're ten feet down, and that doesn't freeze ten feet down. So they could push all winter and be done with it that way. But, no, I'm, I just can't get over it. It's happening so fast after twenty years of doing this, and Dick was a big pusher of that, too. But for us to make money, the town to make money is what I mean. I can't see any other way that doesn't cost us anything. And with the federal and provincial elections coming up...
I think that's the big reason that they want to push it this way. We don't know what's going to happen.
There is nothing, like, what you were talking about, there is nothing that I was questioning about that. It was only whether it was going to be long-term.
Yeah, yeah.
Or another thing where we were going to get something done finally.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah.
Could we start trucking water in advance of pipeline being built?
Yeah, yes. As soon as, if you read the license, we're allowed thirteen hundred gallons a minute at mid and high flow. Right now, there's barely enough water in the creek that it's even running because we had such horrible, so we can't draw from it. So we have probably one acre foot on the west side of the dam. They dug it down about thirty, forty feet, so we can draw from that a little bit. But once we get a rain or some, we'll probably get a snow dump once the leaves come out, so it'll bend all the trees over again.
Crazy.
Yeah. And then that signal start running like crazy, well, we can trap that water. But when there's no flow, we can't draw from it. That's why people like Atco would not want to build big reservoirs for it. So, yeah, sixty feet deep, and if they've got, like, I figure we've got five acres there when I Google, or Google, you can draw it out, and it's five acres.
It is five acres.
Yeah, so that's about thirty, I think it was thirty-one or thirty-two acre feet, at three hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons an acre foot. So that's a lot of water. And then if we make the land around Star Pro paint a wetland and hold eight or ten acre feet of water there, and we can control that under the highway there, and then we're good. And if Atco wants to buy the land, two of the commercial lots and dig down seventy, eighty feet, put in another storage facility, I don't think you guys would care. They'd get taxed for it, and they sell the water, but we always get our money.
The, the, the scenario of, so, no, you raise a very good question, and I can understand why your question because, and I understand residents' questions, you know...
I'm older, so I want to know if this can be in my life.
Number five for that, you know. So I want to, I want to do it before I go. I want to see that thing pumping water to the lake, to all those residents, so we can save a little bit on Pigeon Lake, because, I mean, the deepest part in Pigeon Lake is twenty-five, twenty-eight feet, and it's down about two feet this year already. So, I mean, are we going to have algae blooms this year if we don't get any more water? Yeah, definitely we are. And here, we're drawing millions of gallons of water out of the aquifer that feeds the lake. So, yeah, I, I want it because it, for the environment, there's nothing better. And that's why we, you know, go for a wetland around Five Stars Place there, because that helps us show the government that we're responsible for the water we want to contain and control.
Well, the interesting thing, too, just to add on to the wetland, is that town has a level one A, one A wetlands. In other words, a lot of endangered species go to their wetlands, and so we can use a lot of their expertise under the building of this, and they, they could manage it for us. Because they could, they could coordinate. Now we have two wetlands that, because they're recognized there.
Yeah, they got a high rating.
They do, huge. And they have that big monitoring stations that they put up there to monitor the species that come in.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool, actually. So I've been in talks with them, the conservation team as well. They're very interested.
Because when you talk to, like, Ted Biller, he remembers the swamps. Like, he says, the skies were full of them. Pigeon Lake was full of them, and, you know, all the pumbers and an owl. I haven't seen a swan fly over this town in ten years. But if we could get them back, you know, it sure would be nice.
Make Thor's be great again.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
Well, to that tune, that we, you know, we could annex the golf course and then tell them, if you're not using your water, we're taking it. I'm, I'm just joking, but, you know, he would, he would slap me in the side of the head if he heard me say that, but...
That one's yours, I got other things to do.
But, no, but to me, it's one way we can make money for the town out of the tax, and that's my biggest reason for, you know, pushing this so hard, and for Dick to push it so hard, too, because, I mean, everything he's done, the building of his cabin when I built it and all that, was all bought from Home Hardware at that time, Hosman's Home Hardware. He buys everything here for his, his lake lot, like, any fence or whatever he puts up. He buys it all in Torsby, and he likes the people here, so he comes every Sunday for Essel and their McMuffins. He says they're the best McMuffins ever.
They are good.
And they are good, I agree. So if he wants to push it on our behalf, I'm not going to complain.
So we'll push, we'll run.
Yeah, I'll run behind him as fast as I can until the ticker...
No, you can take the car.
Yeah, I'll take the car. I'll drive.
You do it.
Yeah, and, but...
We're going to call for a break here now. Got a motion to take a break here, and then we'll come back from camera.
But I want to thank you guys for voting in favor of it because it just renews my faith in you guys and the system to get this going. And I thank you for having the vision to look forward. You know, I really do that.
Why, it's our only hope. Otherwise, we're just beating our hands against the rocks.
Yeah, I agree.
Sounds incredible.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Drive safe.
You get to, you don't have to be here.
Or walk safe.
We have no power? You don't have to... Well, that's true, we have no power, so by the clock's mark, we're not open.
Yeah, no power.